Let's put together a text list of all the cell phones, all the employees, and we can send them out a blast text like this issue of Make Money. If I could do it with my hands, I know we could.
You got to do that.
I dropped one.
Don't go, don't go.
And I have right at 5:30, so we will call this meeting to an end. This is recess meeting of November 21st. We'll stand for the Fledge of Allegiance, please. We'll follow that with a moment of prayer following that moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, and Father Father, and Father Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, the one that rules and superrules, the one that made the heaven and earth in their fullness they are, the one that is able to do all things but fail. Again, Father God, here is your man and your board, we come before you again. We didn't come for no shape, form, or fashion, nor our size, shape to the world. God, we come for guidance and direction, how to lead and guide these, your peoples. We ask you, Lord, to bless and strengthen us, not to lean and depend on our own understanding. But, Lord, we will look to you for knowledge, wisdom, and understanding. Grant us that knowledge, wisdom, and understanding that you granted King Solomon, being able to saw and right and wrong, good and evil, for your peoples. Lord, that we will give us a mind and a heart to take these, your children, into the future. Lord, that we will be concerned about all of your children, and all races, and all sects. That, Father God, that we won't leave nobody out. We ask you that you will please forgive us of all our sins, because you only can. What can wipe away our sins? Nothing but the blood of Jesus. What can make me whole again? Nothing but the blood of Jesus. We ask you now that you will fill each and every one of us with your Holy Spirit, but most of all, you will fill this place with your Holy Spirit. Allow us to keep our minds and our hearts and our eyes on you. God, that the decision that we make, heaven will be glorifying. We give all praise and glory and honor to you because of who you are and what you are. Father, it is in Jesus' name that we render this prayer to you, because we are no worthy to stand before you, we are no worthy to be calling upon your holy name. But it is all this because you love us, and you gave us your Son out on Capulet, that we all can have eternal life when this life is over, an abundant life while we're on this earth. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn, for stepping in there at the last minute.
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure.
We appreciate that.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you. All right, we will now move into, and let me say that Alderman Carver is attending by telephone, so that's him sitting right over there. Alderman Carver, can you hear us? Are you with us?
Yes, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. You want to tell us where you are, so we can all be jealous? No? Down at Disney World, Disneyland, Disney World, so we're all jealous for the holiday. All right, we will now move into the official agenda, approval of the official agenda. We have a consent agenda. Do we have any modifications, additions, deletions from the consent agenda? Any, Alderman Little?
Mayor would like to remove under board business item 10C.
Okay, item 10C, the consideration of the final plat, you'd like that removed. Do I hear any objections? Any objections? Okay. We'll remove that item. Item 10C is removed from the agenda. Any further changes, additions, deletions? Alderman Walker?
I'd like to have a consideration of approving the annexation study area presented by Slaughter &amp; Associates.
Okay, do we have?
What was it?
That was the approval of the annexation study area. Do we have any objections to approving that as the study area?
Object.
Okay, all right, we will leave that off the consent agenda. Any further changes to the consent agenda? Alderman?
On the mayor's business.
Alderman Vaughn, I'm sorry. Which one?
On the mayor's business.
On the mayor's business? Okay.
Pull item D from the consent agenda.
The complete streets policy from consent?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we will pull that one from consent. Okay. All right, anything further?
There's one more.
To pull or claim stop get on, or?
Ma'am?
No, I was just, I was just kind of moving along, sorry. I was making a suggestion.
Pull up on the board business, pull item B from it.
Under board business, item B?
Yes, ma'am.
The tactical urbanism project. Okay, we'll remove that one from consent. Okay? All right, that would be three items, one item deleted, and another, two items pulled from consent. All right, any further changes to the consent agenda or to the agenda? Okay? Seeing none? All right, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda with the consent agenda items as modified?
Some of them.
A motion from Alderman, oh, a motion from Alderman Little, I'm sorry. Second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. And this is all going to have to be a roll call vote because of our telephone participation, so y'all keep me straight and help me remember to do that. So if you would answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sisdrup.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Okay, by vote of seven to none, that motion passes. I will now proceed to read the consent items that remain on consent agenda. Under four minutes, consideration of the minutes of the October 13th, 2017 meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the October 17th, 2017 meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the November 3rd, 2017 meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi. Under mayor's business, we have A, consideration of the city of Starkville enacting a Ballard Plan to further promote the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. Item B, we have consideration of approving a mayor's mural program for public spaces in the city of Starkville. E is consideration of the transfer of a 2013 Ford Explorer VIN number 1FM5K8AR1DGC06898 from Starkville Mayor's Inventory to Starkville Park and Recreation Inventory. We have under department business, community develop, community development department planning, A, consideration of travel from Mike St. Louis to travel to Oxford, Mississippi for the Building Officials Association of Mississippi 2017 Winter Training Meeting with advanced travel cost not to exceed $550. Item senior is consideration of FP17-08 Final Plat Approval for subdividing plus or minus 224.30 acres, 30 acre parcel into two, four lots as part of Phase 1 of Cornerstone Park located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Mississippi Highway 12 West and Mississippi Highway 25 bypass in an M1/C2 Zone. Under finance administration, we have request acceptance of the October 2017 financial statement. Item three, consideration of approval for city clerk CFO Lisa Harden to attend the Winter Education Municipal Clerk and Committee Session to be held December 13th through 15th in Jackson with a cost not to exceed $400. Under human resources, we have request approval to hire Denise Marvel as a part-time secretary of the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Number two is request approval to advertise for a maintenance worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Under parks, we have consideration of the approval of the new Starkville Parks and Recreation Field Use Agreement for single day and multi-day tournaments. Number two, consideration of the approval of the new service provider agreement between Starkville Parks and Recreation and Starkville Academy for use of fields at the Starkville Sportsplex. Number three, consideration of the approval of the new service provider agreement between Starkville Parks and Rec and Starkville Soccer Association for use of fields at the Starkville Sportsplex. Under the police department, we have request authorization to transfer a 2005 Ford F-150 to the city of Starkville Sanitation Department VIN number 1FTRX12W36NA41549 and remove from the Starkville Police Department's property. Number two is request authorization to allow Chief Frank R. Frank Nichols to attend the 2017 Winter Educational Conference in Starkville, Mississippi on December 12th through the 15th, 2017 at a cost of $325. Utilities department, number one, we request authorization to purchase equipment and services at a cost of $37,725 for SEDC's meter data management system as part of an ongoing interface between our AMI and billing systems at the lower of two computer quotes and sole source software. Number two is request authorization to purchase the final equipment needed at a total cost of $48,340 to complete conversion to SEDC's multi-service platform, the lower of two computer quotes and sole source software. Number three is request authorization for Starkville Utilities and the city of Starkville to enter into an agreement with Garver LLC for professional services. Number four, request authorization for Starkville Utilities to initiate a task order with Garver LLC for study and evaluation of the South Montgomery Sanitary Sewer System, and that completes the reading of the consent agenda. And from that, we will go to mayor's comments, and tonight I have the opportunity to introduce new employees, and I am particularly excited about this because we have two firefighters, and the first one is Ms. Bethany Allen. Bethany, and she is our female firefighter, first one in 22 years. Is that correct, chief? Am I right about the years? She is our first lady in 22 years that we have on the fire department. Ms. Bethany Allen is a resident of Brandon, Mississippi. Prior to joining the Starkville Fire Department, Bethany was a personal trainer at Club 24 and pursuing her studies towards a degree in psychology from Millsaps. She's now pursuing that degree here at Mississippi State University. She is married to her best friend, Carson, and together they have two dogs, Cota and Beckett. She enjoys exercising, dog training, and playing instruments with her family. Bethany is very thankful for the support of Fire Chief Yarborough, for the opportunity to join SFD. She's looking forward to giving her best to the department and tasks set before her while embracing the opportunities offered through the organization as well as the growth it will provide her personally and professionally. Welcome to Bethany. I'm sorry, I take particular pleasure in this, and there's nothing against you, Mr. Lane, but it's just, it's kind of neat, so, anyway. And so, Mr. Lane, you're up next. Mr. Stephen Lane is a resident of Macon, Mississippi, who came to Starkville to attend Mississippi State University. Prior to joining the Starkville Fire Department, he worked at MSU in the athletic department. He's always had a passion for being a firefighter. Stephen's desire to become a firefighter began when he started volunteering as a firefighter for District 5, Oktok Fire Department. In his spare time, Stephen enjoys eating his mother's cooking and trying out new recipes. He's a big fan of MSU. He enjoys traveling and looking for new experiences. He also enjoys anything outdoors and doing carpentry-type work. Welcome to Stephen. Welcome to you both, and thank you for joining the Starkville Fire Department. We're delighted to have you. Thank you, chief. And I have no other comments other than to take the opportunity to wish everyone a wonderful holiday coming up, and of course, the city will be closed Thursday and Friday, so there'll be no garbage pickup on Thursday or Friday, so I take this opportunity to remind everyone of that. Anyone on the board have any comments at this point in time? Anyone? No? Okay, we'll move into citizens' comments now. Anyone who wishes to speak may have three minutes about whatever topic they like. Mr. Turner, welcome, and happy holidays coming up.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Evan Turner Ward Seven. To the mayor, to the vice mayor, Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Little, Alderman Walker, the MACP President Taylor, and Chief Nichols and Chief Yarborough. We're moving to the dang time of year, and we can't be too careful. Chief, I would like for you if you could just check on my, the death of my brother, there might be some family members involved, and I just feel like that, yeah, if you just check on it, you know, making sister and I feel better because we can't be everywhere. And they don't tell me much, but I'm very careful. So pretty much Turner family, Johnson family, in the days ahead, also, we would, you know, this time of year, people try impersonating officers and different stuff. If you could put an article to let citizens know about someone that might try to personate anyone, because we got three hard days back to back, and people that could take it for the advantage to get over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Yes, chief? Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the board. In reference to what Mr. Turner said about people impersonating officers, my officers know that if someone don't stop and they're not speeding, then that's chances are they're doing that, and they're going to go to a lighted space. So that's what we're prepared to do, and we encourage the citizens, if they think they're being stopped by somebody who's impersonating an officer, to go to a lighted area, like a gas station or something like that where there's a crowd of people or people are.
Okay, all right, thank you, chief. We appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to come under citizens' comments and make comments?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the board. In reference to what Mr. Turner said about people impersonating officers, my officers know that if someone don't stop and they're not speeding, then that's chances are they're doing that, and they're going to go to a lighted space. So that's what we're prepared to do, and we encourage the citizens, if they think they're being stopped by somebody who's impersonating an officer, to go to a lighted area, like a gas station or something like that where there's a crowd of people or people are.
Okay, all right, thank you, chief. We appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to come under citizens' comments and make comments?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and board of Alderman. My name is Jason Robertson, and I'm the new mayor of the Starkville Mayor's Youth Council. We have recently traveled to Flowood, Mississippi, so that our executive board could properly train on how to be better leaders in our society. I just want to thank the mayor of Starkville and other city officials for working alongside the future youth of Starkville. Together, we can build a better tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
We appreciate you participating and coming to talk to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and Alderman.
Yes, sir.
Bob Rogers, I was told that there was going to be a public meeting, public forum on the annexation tonight. Two people at the city hall told me that, but I don't think that's on the schedule.
No, sir, it's not, but you're welcome to say whatever you like to say for three minutes, so you go right ahead.
Well, I wonder if you've figured out how many miles of sidewalk will be required? Secondly, will the police force in Starkville take over security at Mississippi State? And will they take over the streets and everything else in Mississippi State? In the proposal, because I don't really know what the proposal is, what little thing I saw in the paper.
It's just, at this point in time, it's just a study area. That's all we're, it's just a study area at this point in time?
Study area.
Yes, sir, that's what we're looking at, areas that might be a good place for us to annex, to add into Starkville. So that's all we're thinking.
The other question was, there was a statement in the paper that the city is giving away its services to people that don't pay. I was wondering what services the city is giving away that people don't pay for?
I have, I have no idea, Mr. Rogers, but...
It was a statement that said you said it.
No, I don't think I said that, so I didn't mean to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to engage with you here, I apologize, but, but anyway, if there's something else you wanted to say about it, just asking questions, okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Citizens' comments? All right, thank you. We will move along to, we have no public appearances tonight, we have a public hearing. We have three public hearings. The first public hearing is our second public hearing to amend the smoking ordinance, which is the, to include an indoor smoking exemption. And what we'll do is allow for, we've gone through this several times in the recent past, so this is to allow an indoor smoking exemption. Anyone wishing to speak to it, we'll, I'll allow for 15 minutes, either side, so if there, anyone who wants to speak in favor of this issue, please come forward. If this is in, this is in favor of the smoking exemption?
Mayor, vice mayor, board, how are you all doing this evening? Joseph Enfinger, owner of 1810 Vapors here in Starkville on Stark Road. I'm here again to urge you guys to vote yes for this exemption and the smoking ban. I'm the only vapor-only store in the city and the only vapor smoke shop that is located in a standalone building to my knowledge in town. There's no worry of it affecting neighboring businesses for that reason. For that matter, I honestly wouldn't be opposed if combustible tobacco was scratched from the exemption entirely. I'm not fighting for tobacco, I'm fighting for a better option. When customers come into my store, they are fully aware of what type of business they are entering. If an individual does not want to be around an environment with vapor in the air, all they have to do is simply not come into that environment in the first place. As for my employees and myself, we are more than comfortable in that environment. We do not believe there will be any adverse reaction to us being around vapor products, so everyone coming into the shop on a regular basis has no fears or worries. That being said, there should be no reason to prohibit us from continuing our business as usual. As far as that goes, I don't think many of you can justify this vote on health concerns. I witnessed you pass an ordinance that allowed the extended sale of alcohol. That alone allowed more drunk drivers to hit the road every night, as well as the health concerns that are actually proven with alcohol consumption. Can you prove to me or any of us here that vaping is hurting anyone at all? Yet, we've given you proof of the benefits. The fact is that vaping is here to stay. We're a multi-billion dollar industry, and each day we are taking more and more money from pharmaceutical and tobacco companies, and that is why you hear negative propaganda about us. The fact is, I've invited you all multiple times to visit and learn more about the things you're making laws on. I've asked to hear your concerns on the matter so we could overcome them, and have not had response. There are new studies out since we last met showing positive signs in long-term vapors, and the FDA has enacted a five-year extension on regulating vaping. If the FDA is doing that, why aren't city officials following suit instead of attacking vapors and small business owners trying to improve their lives and make a living? I can work with the exemption for standalone buildings. I can work inside those confines as long as I can continue to take care of my customers like they have grown accustomed to. I'm asking you not to hurt my business, my employees, and most of all, to not hurt my customers with this vote, if their lives depend on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance?
Mayor, vice mayor, Alderman, Alderman women, Mike Jeffcoat again. I'm sure y'all remember who I am. I'm the owner of Magnolia Vapes and vice president of the MSVAA. Along with Joseph, I would ask that y'all please put an exemption in section three. Our request is pretty simple. The, we're not, we don't want cigarette smoking when y'all say an exemption for smoking. We're not looking to put cigarette smoking or combustible tobacco under the realm of this decision. We're strictly looking to extract the vapor in a standalone building where the customers know where they're going and trying to improve the quality of their lives. As Joseph stated a minute ago, the FDA, you know, we've heard the naysay of our opposition say that we're not under the realm of the FDA. We certainly are. The FDA, when this started, they figured they were going to have about 200, 300 submissions of product. There has been over 600,000 SKUs submitted. They can't even keep up with the thrust of what's going on. They've extended the deadlines just for submissions already twice, just for product, and that's expect, in the next six months, that's expected to double again. The ultimate end game of this is to get people off combustible tobacco and allow them to have another choice rather than smoking cigars, smoking cigarettes, and increase the quality of their life. The science that we've supplied y'all clearly states, and I hope y'all took the time to read this stuff, and read what it's really doing. The Royal College of Physicians has come out, and, I mean, the information's coming out even stronger every day. They just did a test on vapors who were non-smokers and non-vapors, and they had volunteers come in and submit themselves to these tests where they were taking in vapor, and of course, they had some people fall in, fall out, but the end basis is there was no change in a person who does not smoke or does not vape that took on vaping. They did the baseline study, it's very in-depth, you know, I can share it with y'all, but it's about 50 pages long of scientific information, and to say that a person who does not smoke can pick up a vaporizer and be tested for 3.5 years and have no change in their lung condition, that's saying something, that's very important. I please ask y'all to include an exemption for the standalone buildings. That would leave Joseph with 1810, there's only one store. There aren't very many standalone buildings in Starkville available for someone as myself to come in and do business, so my other option would be to come in here and build something so I can do business. So please take into consideration and give us an exemption in section three, along with the bed and breakfast, hotels, et cetera. I thank you for your time, I hope y'all have a wonderful holiday. Thanks again.
Thank you, sir. Did we lose Alderman Carrver?
We're getting back.
Okay.
You back, Alderman Carrver? Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. I didn't realize, is there a way for us to know when?
He texted.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone in favor? Okay, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak opposing the exemption?
Good evening, my name is Robert McMillan, I live in Ward Seven, and I just want to speak a little bit against the idea of an exemption. I think exemptions open up loopholes, it can get slippery. If we have an exemption, it could create, as it is now, and at least in the ordinance that I saw, the last amendment, it could create legal space for cigar bars and hookah lounges. That, I don't think would be a good thing for Starkville. I don't think a vape lounge would be good for Starkville. One of the reasons we passed our smoke-free ordinance in 2006 was to protect non-smokers from smoke, and that's great. One of the other things that these ordinances do that we had not necessarily intended when we started passing these in the early 2000s, was it denormalizes tobacco use. Every time you tell people you can't do something in a public space, it starts to denormalize it, and one of the impacts of that is we see fewer adolescents and young adults taking up tobacco use, and more adult tobacco users attempting to stop when we denormalize tobacco use by telling people they can't do it in real places. I think an exemption would serve to undermine that, especially if it was expanded accidentally or intentionally beyond vaping. The other thing to keep in mind is that we are two-time winner of Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthiest Home Town, and that was really fun for us to win. It came with a monetary award as well as bragging rights over Tupelo. That was very fun. I was in the room when Tupelo found out that we won and they didn't, and that was nice. But, one of the qualifications to apply for that is to be a community that the smoke-free ordinance includes e-cigarettes. If we have an exemption that allowed a vape lounge, or cigar bar, or hookah lounge, we might not be eligible, unqualified to apply for that again, and that was, again, a neat thing for this community, and it brought in resources for more health initiatives in this community. So I urge the board of Alderman not to consider an exemption to our smoke-free ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Anyone else wishing to speak against the change in this ordinance? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will pose it as a public hearing. Any discussion from the board at this point? Okay, none?
I'll discuss.
I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn?
I'll discuss it when it come up to a motion.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll move on to our first public hearing on the sign ordinance, which is changes in the outdoor advertising sign ordinance, or billboard ordinance, if you will, element, and then the banner signs for special events and the variance process. This, in essence, is, Alderman Little, do you want to, did you want to speak to this? You want me to?
Yes, you can.
Okay. This, in essence, is putting our billboard ordinance, or our billboard signs, making all of them non-conforming, and so that we will hopefully one day minimize any number of billboard signs. We currently have, I believe, 15 in town? 15, is that correct? Okay, all right. And so, I know, I actually own one, and I have plans to take it down after the holidays, so it will be coming down, we'll reduce that number, but as that number reduces, it does not get to increase, so, do you have that ordinance pulled up? Mr. Hamilton?
I don't have all the ordinance, but I have a draft.
The draft, yeah, would you, would you be so kind?
Why are he getting up to there?
Yes, sir.
Why are we up on that billboard sign down at Starkville Motors down there? You know, billboard down, sign down at Starkville Motors right there. You know, billboard sign down at Starville Motors right there, Canada, on the bottom of that hill on 12?
Okay, where are we in the sense?
How long would that be, would that continue to be there?
Well, and that's part of this. It will be a Class 2. Would be Class 1, I'm sorry, you're right, I've got a foot fall. It'd be a Class 1 because it is on a state-controlled route. Right, and I assume that where it's located, it is within that state-controlled route. So, that would be one of those that would be regulated through this new ordinance. And Daniel, can you speak to it, please?
Yeah, just to grab it up here and show it, all the ones that are in red that are along Highway 12, Highway 25, and then 182. The red ones are, would all become Class 1, which is regulated by state law. The green ones that are along Lewisville Street and then Lynn Lane, those would be Class 2, and then we have a removal period set up for this proposal.
So, mine would be coming down, that's the one on Lynn Lane, and the others will be amortized and will be required to come down. The ones along the state law, or state highway, Mr. Latimer, they fall under a different requirement status, and so we are, we're trying to address those in that there will be no more going up, and we are certainly hopeful that the number that we have can be reduced, and that's part of this effort, so.
So, if the one in, so if the one in the red, so if they happen to take it down, can they put it back up?
If it becomes conforming, if it were to become conforming, then that would be the determining factor.
Okay, we will move into a public hearing. If anyone wants to come and speak in favor of the sign ordinance, we'll do it with the same amount, the 15 minutes, each side. Anyone wanting to speak in favor of the sign ordinance? In favor? Okay? I see no one speaking in favor of it at this point. Like someone who wants to come speak against the sign ordinance change. If you come identify yourself.
General comments about the sign ordinance, but they said absolutely can't.
Okay, all right.
Good evening. I'm Mark Baker. I represent the Lamar Companies. I want to thank the Board of Alderman for the opportunity to come tonight, thank staff for allowing us to provide some input. I just have a couple comments about the proposed ordinance that I'd like to bring your attention, and maybe we could hopefully come to some common ground about those. In particular, with regard to, we had a few comments that we brought up to the Planning Commission. It looks like those have been, for the most part, worked through. There's one provision in the ordinance I'd ask the Board to consider more closely, and that is the part about requiring all of the current signs to be re-permitted, and I guess then by application, pay a new permit fee. That's in Section G, Page 12 of the ordinance. All of the signs have been previously permitted, and I would submit to you that requiring another permit could closely resemble a tax because it's not generally related to the work associated with issuing the permit in the first place because that's already been paid. And I would reference to you the basic analysis that occurred with the Mayor and Board of Alderman, the City of Ocean Springs versus home builders when they were talking about an impact fee. So, I would just ask you to consider the fact that signs that are already up, permits have, permit fees have already been paid for the process of issuing or approving the sign and the process that that occurs as well. And I'd ask to consider that. I don't want to get into an argument about non-conformity, non-conforming signs and billboard signs. You have an amortization schedule, that's something that can be discussed another day. It's not something we have to bring up now. Obviously, Lamar takes a position that, under the state statute that's been quoted there, cited there, that all outdoor advertising signs are not, are exempt from the amortization as just compensation. I would ask that you consider defining under G2, the definition of abandonment or obsolescence. I would submit that undefined just leaves a gray area there, and you may want to look at that. The Mississippi Department of Transportation defines that under their regulations as basically blank 12 months. But, that definition is included in Subpart 7501, Section 300, and I can get that to planning staff, but basically, the upshot is if there's no advertising matter on there for 12 months, it's considered abandoned or obsolete. It may give you an opportunity to be consistent with that. I do want to thank staff and hopefully the Board if you decide to go forward with this ordinance. I think the petition process is fair and reasonable, allows Lamar and others to come forward with a plan to reduce your sign stock, clean up your sign stock, and provide a cleaner product for the city of Starkville. So, those are two issues I have. I do think a lot of hard work has gone into this. I commend staff for their, for their working with us, speaking with us, counsel, taking the opportunity. We had a great appearance in front of the Planning Commission the other night. I want to appreciate, I appreciate them and their professionalism there. If we can provide any additional input, we would appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Oh, and on a personal note, being the city attorney for the city of Brandon, I'm going to call Bethany's mother-in-law tomorrow, and the fire chief, and we're going to try to find out how come we lost her to y'all when we get back down to Brandon.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this ordinance? For or against at this point in time? All right, seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Turner, I apologize, I didn't see you coming forward.
My concern would be what front farm duty church signs fall on, and we see that in the redo on Highway 12, they got some kind of gat stuck in the fly bed, and they got it covered up, and we have a lot of people that do U-turns in highway and all, and you have to try not to hit each other, but what are the issues with church signs?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay, anyone else regarding the sign ordinance? Okay? I'll close it as a public hearing. Any discussion from the Board at this point in time about the sign ordinance? Okay, we also have a public hearing on EX 1702, a request by Mr. Hartline for an exception for the use of a pole sign at Sundance Condos in an R3 zone of parcel number 102H-00-192.00. Mr. Havelin, do you have? Yes, she does. Okay. Do we have a picture of that sign?
Sure do.
Okay, there's the sign that Mr. Hartline has put up, and that came to our attention after it was up because we had someone else who was pointing to that sign as something that they wanted to do likewise. And so, that being the case, Mr. Hartline has come in to ask for an exception, obviously. So, any questions before I open it as a public hearing? Okay. I will now open this as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter of the pole sign? Please feel free to do so now. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm John Hartline. Didn't realize I was building a pole sign when I constructed, so I apologize. We built it out of wood timbers. The pole actually is only eight feet tall, and half of it's taken up out of decorative stone, and we kind of levered it over. I should have, I guess, run it by the planning department, but I didn't. I do think it looks good. We have a totally solid wood sign we had engraved, and I got it from over in England. It has some carves on it, and it goes with the decor of our project, and, you know, I'd like to ask for an exception to it. We've got a nice-looking sign, spent a little money, and I just, like I said, I'd never thought it was considered a pole sign because it's just not what I would have thought would be a pole with a 12-foot metal sign hanging over, and I can understand why, now why it may not meet the code, but I would ask that y'all accept this as an exception.
Thank you, Mr. Hartline. Anyone else wishing to speak about this particular sign? Okay, I will close it as a public hearing. Any discussion from any of the Board members at this point? Okay? All right, we will move on to Mayor's business, and under that, we have consideration of the annexation study area. And that was sent to the Board. Do we have that listed? Did that end up in the E-Packet? Okay. Who's driving? Joel, would you come drive? The proposed annexation study area, and this, then that's all it is, ladies and gentlemen, is an area that we are looking at as possibly bringing it into the city. There's a small area to the west that includes Sunset and the Lynx, and there is an area just to the north to bring in Collier Road, which is, was left out in the 1998 annexation study, or 1998 annexation. So, the areas in red to the west there, and that little jump up there in red to the north, and then the areas to the east and to the south are the proposed areas. So, those would be the areas for study. And when I say study, I mean the determination of whether or not this is feasible, whether it's economically feasible, whether it is feasible in terms of services for both us and those who would be coming into the city. So, that has been the growth pattern. That is obviously where a large portion of the residents in Occam Hall County reside is just the other side of Mississippi State University. We are in talks with Mississippi State University about them being a part of this annexation, and there are opportunities for us to do that with their concurrence, and we're hoping to work our way through that where they would prefer that we not have their streets and not have their, they want their own streets, their own police. They pretty much want what they have now, which we are perfectly content with. It has worked very well for all of us. We provide them fire service, and water, and electricity, and sewer, so the only remaining services would be police and streets, and they want to retain theirs, so, as it relates to Mississippi State. However, further to the east, obviously, there is University Hills, Shealy Hills, and several other areas, both south and east. So, those are the areas to study, with the goal being to determine whether or not this is feasible. So, what I have asked the Board to do is be willing to look at this. We have Slaughter and Associates, and this is the proposed area. So, now is an opportunity for us to talk about those particular areas and see if anyone has any other areas that they were interested in in bringing in or leaving out. So, I will open the discussion. Alderman Little.
Motion for approval.
Okay, I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Okay, we'll move into discussion. Alderman Vaughn, I see your hand.
Yeah, you touched some of it about the 1998 annexation, and that's really concerned me that we got a bond, a $7 million bond, and I can't see, we going outside the scope or somewhere else, but we haven't fixed what we got inside the city limit. You read what you said, all the rock roads still, even though we got a rock road on Jessup Road and all like that, but still, why would we go out there and don't pay attention to these roads, trying to bring these roads to standard? Seems like we fixing everything going to Mississippi State, they have nothing against it, but it seems like we fixing everything going that way, and then we got something that we should have fixed in 1998, still not fixed. I mean, soon as you start going toward Rock Hill, you got a roundhouse right there for rock road. I mean, we looking like the county now. We got rock roads at all in the city limit, but we avoiding these rock roads that we got in the city limit, but we want to fix everything here. And I think we should bring, look, you know, got Cedar Creek Lane out there that I get so much heat about, and I told you, we need to sit down and discuss what are we going to do about Cedar Creek Lane? And I think it's the same thing that we need to do about these roads and going toward Rock Hill that was in the 1998 annexation. We still need to do something about that. We want annex here, we want annex there. Why we can't fix what we already have annexed? It's not fixed yet, but we still looking to go north, south, east, and west. That's another thing. At first, we were talking about going one way. I'm glad you said north, south, east, and west because it would have been unfair just to go one area. So, we do need to look at a north, south, and east, and west, but at 1998 annexation, I don't see how we possibly could go and do something else and don't fix the 1998 annexation with all those rock roads in the city limit. I mean, it's obsolete, it's time out for that kind of stuff. We know what's in the county, we're going to leave these roads in the city limit. You're going to fix roads everywhere, have them pretty, but still, we say the quality of life for everybody, they want the quality of life too, but we just avoiding that issue. I don't know why we keep avoiding that 1998 issue. It's a real issue. These people don't want to ride on rock road all the way out there trying to fix the roads a little bit. Soon as it rain, we back, we back at square one. They got those roots right back in the same road, at square one. But, we want to pretty everything else, but we want pretty what we already fixed, what we already done before I got on the board. 1998 annexation, it was done before I got here, but we've been avoiding it ever since I've been on this, we've been avoiding that issue, and I bet since 2009, and it's nine years. Out of nine years, I know we could have come up with enough revenue to go out there and pay those fees, instead of having those people riding them, but we say the quality of life, do we really mean the quality of life for everybody? Do we really?
Okay, thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Anyone else? Anyone else? No further discussion? Okay. I do think that the quality of life is important, and I think that those roads, if you recall, those roads in some cases were barely roads. I think a lot of them are in Vice Mayor Perkins' ward, and we have done, made some efforts toward them, but I certainly think that we need to continue to make those efforts. I don't think that precludes our ability to take in other areas that are already benefiting from city services. And when I said that, I guess that's what the quote was, my intent was to say that they were benefiting from being close to the city, not necessarily city services in the sense of water, sewer, et cetera, but city services in the sense of being very near our community, living in an urban area, but not paying for urban services. And so, that was my reference, and while sometimes it's not always clear what we're saying when we're talking to the newspaper, how it comes across, but my intent was to say they're in a very urban setting, but not being a part of an urban city limit scape, so that was my, that was kind of my theory on that. All right, if there's no further discussion, then I have a motion and a second, and we'll, if anyone would answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
Okay. By a vote of five to two, the motion passes. So, that will be our study area. Thank you very much. All right, and then we have a complete streets policy, and that was on the consent agenda but has been removed, so let me go into just a mild explanation of that. That, too, is an effort of continuing to do the things that we are already doing, but simply stating it is an aspirational policy that says, wherever possible, we will make our community pedestrian-friendly, mass transit-friendly, disabled-friendly, and we will make all of the choices as we lay, as we overlay, as we create new streets, as we build and construct, that we will attempt to, where feasible, economically feasible, reasonably feasible, put in sidewalks, make those things accessible to all of our community, and these are things we are already doing. But, to go back to why adopting a policy now, my intent was to help us once again be a part of what is viewed as the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Hometown Policy, that the adoption of an aspirational complete streets policy is beneficial as we try to move forward and show that we are a healthy hometown. So, that was the effort. It is not asking for us to do anything that we are not already doing as we plan for capital improvement projects, so. Any discussion?
Motion for approval.
I have a motion for approval for Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Now, discussion. Alderman Vaughn.
Will that, will we pay attention to all the broken sidewalks that we have in some of the areas? Will that fall upon that situation? And then I go back to the same thing, we still got areas that sidewalks are broken. And then I go back to the same thing, we still got areas that sidewalks are broken, leaning down. Are we going to do, are we going to look at all the areas in the city and try to put those up to standard like, like we doing everywhere else? Well, I got a plan, I can let you see, and my, I commit up, I can let you see. And still go back to the same thing. Right there, right, right there at Roundhouse, that closer to the city limit is, are we going to take, are we going to take a sidewalk that way?
We're going, we're going to take a sidewalk wherever it is reasonably feasible, and that's part of it. But we are also, if, if my calculations remain correct, I believe we've got $100,000 in our capital improvement plan to do sidewalks, which is both repairing sidewalks and new sidewalks. And we're going to go forward with that. That is part of our capital improvement plan that this board passed, and we have every intention of paying attention to sidewalks, which I find is really wonderful, because it used to be sidewalk, everybody's complaining about sidewalks to nowhere, now everybody wants sidewalks. And I'm delighted that that's the way this has gone, but yes, we absolutely are going to pay attention to sidewalks.
So I'm delighted about it myself, but one thing, I just hope we be, I hope we be mindful, like you say, quality of life for everybody. We don't want to eliminate anybody. Make sure that we do it wisely and do it right.
Absolutely.
That's the only thing, that's the only thing I ask of you.
Absolutely. I, I concur, and I think this board is very forward-thinking in moving ahead with sidewalks. And I think, Edward, is it 100,000, it's 100,000, right? Yeah. So we have, we've got a large commitment. We also have a commitment to, I think, be able to use some funds on Highway 12 to add sidewalks where there aren't any, where we see the cow paths that come from various intunded places where people are trying to walk along 12. We're going to see if we can't put some sidewalks on 12 as well from a different, from a different fund that is MDOT-controlled. So we have, we have some very strong aspirations in that way. Okay, anyone, any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. If you answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
By a vote of seven and nothing, it is a, a complete streets policy passage. Thank you all. All right, our next item under board business. Item A is consideration of amending the smoking ordinance, 2008-08, as amended by ordinance 2017-07. Starble Code of Ordinance is Chapter 82, Article 4, Code Section 82-91, at sec to include the indoor smoking exemption. Any motion, I have a motion from Alderman Sistrum.
And this is in no way speaking to the benefits or lack thereof of vaping. It is just an interest in making sure that we treat all our smoking businesses consistently. And I move that we deny the proposed amendment for a smoking exemption contained in the proposed Section 3C of the city's smoking ordinance, 2008-08, as amended by ordinance 2017-7, Chapter 82, Article 4, Code Sections 82-91.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Perkins. And it has been reduced to writing, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Anyone? Alderman Carver, you still with us? Alderman Carver? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm just checking, I want you to make sure he was still there, I apologize. Alderman Vaughn, go ahead.
Ms. Sistrum, thank you so much, Vice. Bud, Chair, thank you. Some of you took, I was going to, but you took just where, where I was going. As to where the original ordinance has achieved that state, stated goal, and the Maryland Board of Alderman, which is continuing the prohibition of smoking in public place and place of employment with no provision for the automatic repeal, and whereas the, since the original passage of smoking order, there have been technology change to ability to obtain the nicotine byproduct that contribute to the negative to the environment and have the same catch of risk of the secondhand smoke. Why we want to put our citizen in jeopardy? Why we want to make exemptions just to put our citizen in jeopardy? The ordinance before us, had been before us, did was done in 2008. We haven't lose no business from there, business still rolling on. I, you know, I love business, because we love the revenue, but this hasn't changed. Didn't nobody go out of business when they, when this order was made. Didn't no one go out of business. Everyone still in business. So why are we going to make exemption for one business that will cause harm to our citizen? I don't want to cause no harm to them. I want them to live a long time, like I want to live a long time. And I don't want to see nobody die from secondhand smoke.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. If you would answer when the yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Alderman Carver?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor, move the, move the paper, please.
I've got a motion and a second to deny Alderman Carver, so that's, that is where we are right now. We're asking for a roll call vote on the motion to deny.
Okay, nay.
Okay, nay, thank you.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn, I'm sorry, Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries to deny. All right, moving along. Next, we have consideration approving, approving a location for a prototype tactical urbanism project on University Drive in front of Oktobal County Library. This is one of those fun things for me, but Alderman Walker, would you like to, as the expert in the field?
Sure. I think what this would give us an opportunity to, to look at would be increasing public space in the downtown core, in front of the public library, looking to do that temporarily at first to see what, what if any traffic issues that would cause before we commit to putting real money to make a significant change, but doing something more temporary at first to see how that's going to work. I think it would be very beneficial in front of that public space. We have a narrow sidewalk there, we have an existing turning lane that's about 12 feet. We could end up taking six or eight feet of, of that and really make that a more pleasant place to be in front of the public library. So this would be just a, a move in that direction to see if that would be something that long-term as part of a capital improvement plan that we would be interested in pursuing further.
And can I show you a picture? Mr. Clements, would you be so kind as to come up and, and show the, the tactical urbanism potential? This is really cool, Alderman Vaughn.
Is it in the packet here, Mayor?
Yes, it is. Mm-hmm. It's, uh, under board business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Down, down a little bit more. Prototype, there you go. You take like a lane, yeah, you take like a lane of tra, Ben, you're hitting on. You take like a lane of traffic there, and you put it out there and create, it's kind of a little park, and it, it allows you to see what that would be like, there you go, for your area in front of the library. For example, if people wanted to go out and read books, put some umbrellas or something out there. And that is catty corner to that new midtown development, which is going to have some area where they're going to have outdoor seating and outdoor eating areas of restaurants on that first floor. And let us take a look and see if that's a viable way to do that. It's very temporary. Scroll down some more, Joel. Yeah, now can you do a rotate? Yeah. And see how they've done it, just temporarily, they've got plants sitting out there, it's just a way to create a little park area and see if that's, see if that's something that would be viable for that right-hand turn lane. Yes, sir.
What did we see, other parts of town that we can do that, or will we be?
Oh, absolutely. You kidding? I love that stuff. I'm hunting for places to do that. I'm absolutely hunting for places to do that. I think it's way cool. And there's some, in fact, we had talked about Long Street, about how wide, you know, it's so wide, you can take it in and do some things with it as well. Put some markings on it and create more bicycle area, more walking area.
It would help slow traffic as well.
Yeah, it would slow traffic. Alderman Little.
To her, to her point, my question is, is this to look at the feasibility of, if we were to do away with that right turn lane, or is this to move forward with the project?
Well, this is, this is to move forward with the project, but Alderman Walker is going to kind of create that dynamic. I mean, it's not, it's temporary. No matter what you do, you know, you can just, like they put those hay bales or whatever that, that stuff is out there. You move some plants out into that area, you, you know, put some benches or whatever out into that area and just go ahead and do it. I mean, it's, it's temporary. You can come up and move it at some, at some other point in time. So I would say go ahead and go forward with it, and because it's easy to undo. I mean, if it creates an issue, we'll know in probably, what, Jason, a month, two weeks, three weeks, a month?
I was looking downtown this weekend at the area north of there, or I guess west of there, that unused portion of the sidewalks that stepped down. Should we try that area first to kind of see?
Well, now see, you're right, you're falling right in my wheelhouse.
Because that's just, before we start giving up turn lanes and creating issues there, I'm just, I'm just thinking, try and see how those would do, because I think we probably got a lot more traffic there than we do in front of the library right now.
Where are you going?
Downtown outside in front of the Starble Cafe, then across the street, you've got that area sidewalk that's down in front of the cars, nobody utilizes. You just go up the steps and get on the other side. You don't talk.
I do, and because here's, here's what I've done.
Take down the rails and make it extended.
Well, that's exactly, and I've got, I've been in discussions with Lee Carson out at the university. He's not only an architect, but he's also a construction person. He builds houses. And he's got a, a plan for his class, for the spring project, to do exactly that, bless you. Two locations in downtown, one of them's in front of Starble Cafe, and the other one kind of in front of Mo's. But it's a design-build kind of thing, so that it takes a little bit longer, and it's going to have a little cost to it, so I would need to do a little time to raise some public funds. This, on the other hand, would be just like, you know, that. We can easily do that, get some donations from co-op, for example, for maybe some big bucket trees and put a bench out there, and it can go away in no time at all, as opposed to the other, which is going to be a construction project, if you will. But yes, I-
And I'm not necessarily, I'm opposed, but I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, would we have any safety or liability issues with them sitting out unprotected per se with some just plant? I mean, I, I don't know, you know, you never know what a driver could do.
Right. No, I understand, and, and that would be one of those, but they're doing it all over. I mean, this is, this is not, this is not a single incident, they're, they're just all over the place. So, um-
It's due to me, I'm just, that's why.
No, I understand, I'm just excited about it. I think it's a cool idea. Alderman Sistrum, I see your hand.
Um, I, I see it also as, as something that improves, improves some areas and gives people an opportunity to get out, but I, I think one important thing is how, how necessary is that turn lane at the library? Has the city engineer weighed in on whether it's something that we could test drive this project without creating a lot of problems?
And he did. Edward, you want to speak to that real quickly, please, sir? Or take your time, either one.
I also see this as a terrific, um, traffic control opportunity in neighborhoods and around town.
Yes, sir.
I think, I mean, I'm definitely open to the idea as well, that definitely think it's worth a study. The thing that I suggested to the mayor is to look at it from a traffic data standpoint and to see if a right turn is warranted at that location. I think we can do a traffic study, collect some counts from a daily peak hour timeframe, and there's kind of some national industry-recognized standards on if turn lanes are warranted or not, so we could evaluate it from that standpoint. That would just be one, one part of the decision, you know, that you could, that you could evaluate it with.
I would like to have that, that on the, for, for the full stand ahead of the justice.
Okay. And what would, what would be the count necessary to, to believe that you needed? What would create that right-hand turn need?
I don't know, there's a, there's a threshold, and there's, there's a warrant, just like there's a warrant on traffic volume if a traffic signal, for example, is needed, or a left turn is needed at certain locations. So there's some, some standards in the manual for uniform traffic control devices, which is kind of the national standard for that.
Okay, so how long would it take you to do the study of that nature?
We want to collect, we would want to collect data when it's representative of a normal timeframe, so if we can't get the data next week, it would probably be in January when the students come back.
Okay. We got a traffic counter out and about?
We do not, not, not for that locate, not that type of counter, so, but, but hopefully I can get my hands on one. I'll definitely try my best.
Okay. Alderman.
We had any complaints about the lack of no right turn lane at that intersection since the midtown development's been under construction for the last four months, and that right-hand turn lane has been gone. Has anybody called a complaint saying that it's been difficult to traverse University Drive because of the right turn lane gone?
Going north.
Right.
The right turn lane going to the west that turns right on north.
To go north. To, to go north on Montgomery.
I'm not. Okay. I, I think, and I think that, I think that, I'm all for having the data. I got no issue with us putting the data down. But I would say, I don't know what the peak time is right there, it's certainly not 7:45 to 8:30, because there's nobody in the right turn lane at that point going right. And I think, I think we had these spots all over, and I'm all for having the, the data to, to back that up. I think we need to be concise and know what it is we're looking at. Otherwise, a little bit of pain, all this would be done with the, with following engineering practices to make sure things are set back the right amount of distance, so we're eliminating safety issues. But I think we have a lot of places around town where we're giving up asphalt that most cars never really drive on, and I think the case in point is in front of the Fire Station 1, where as part of that redo came out and we grabbed about eight or nine feet of what was a street that no cars ever drove on, and we've done that, and now nobody even, you didn't miss it. So we have a lot of these kind of places around town. But I'm all for getting a little bit of data that helps support that idea, because this is all taxpayer dollars. Everything that we own on the street is ours, and it's, most of the time, we don't take advantage of it nearly enough to think about how that piece of street functions beyond just people moving in a vehicle. If we do that, it's going to make not only our downtown, it's going to make all the, the spots that, that people are going to go to, it's going to make them more lively and more livable. So I'm all for collecting some data and then seeing if we can move forward, but I'll, I'll be willing to proceed however y'all like.
Alderman Sistrum.
And, and I'm, I think that was a great point about the turn lane across the street there. That's, that's an area that I drive on, that I think all of us probably drive on, and it's an excellent proxy for, for that area in front of the library. I've not noticed any difficulties with traffic making or not having access to that right turn lane. So, given that it is a temporary project, that we do have a proxy that, that will let us know that it's not cumbersome to give up that bit of space, I, I think I can certainly support moving forward with this as a test case, and as we look at more of them, we'll incorporate getting the, the data that we're looking for in each of those projects.
And let me say, the only complaint I have heard associated with that particular corner is that the sidewalk is, is blocked. So it's not, it's not a traffic as much as it is just a pedestrian access that's been complained of. So, anyway, I, I just think it's exciting, and I think it's an opportunity for us to do some cool things around town in multiple locations. So, anyway, I thank you, Alderman Walker, for being, being the expert on this field. So, do we have a motion?
Um, let me find it here. Well, so moved.
Okay. Okay. So I have a motion for approving the location for a prototype tactical urbanism project on University Drive in front of Octavak County Library. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. All right. If you would, any further discussion? Sorry.
Mayor, just one observation. A gentleman from four, I think when we approve that midtown development, I think that was, may have been a very strong vote, if not a majority vote, you know, because I think that development is going to allow on-street parking, which is a very major intersection. So at that time, I don't recall anyone who came forward and spoke against that. I mean, well-traveled intersection. And of course, from my recollection of the discussion, that coming from the university taking right onto Montgomery going toward 182, you know, you have parking there. So I mean, that's area you won't have access. So I remember that very well. So with that being said, I'm going to support this motion. And, and I was wondering how, how that was going to play out when the motion was, you know, when that motion was brought with that development. And I saw the sign there today, I believe, that they're going to be moving in there hopefully by August of 2018.
That's what they hope.
Yeah, they're hoping, they're hoping. And that intersection's going to be very occupied with that on-street parking. So, so the board has already made a commitment at that location to give up that space there without, you know, in all transparency about what we did, I mean, there was no study about that, getting given up that space. Is that right, gentleman from board?
I believe that's correct.
Yes, sir. So I just wanted, just missing observation, just wanted to point out some relevant facts to this discussion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay. I have a motion, a second without further discussion. I see no further discussion. If you would answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've got pretty poor reception, and I'm just going to excuse myself after this vote.
Okay. Thank you.
But the vote is yea.
All right. Thank you, sir. And have fun.
Yea. Yeah, I'm only getting about half the word, but.
Okay. Sorry.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right.[1555.33]